allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands, one nation, another government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
How about that TCU team?
Get a motion and call a meeting order and approve the agenda.
So move.
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approve the minutes of January ninth.
I move to approve the minutes of January ninth.
By Carl.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anyone from the general public? Alrighty, you have a vote in the public. Michelle.
Michelle will not be coming and neither will Corey Keller. We'll cancel because of the weather.
See, now we're way ahead.
We picked up a half hour.
We picked up a whole bunch of time. Dean, do you wanna?
Yeah, I ended up, uh, a sheet, uh, my chief deputy in jail administrator, Brian Rickles, was gonna be here, but he's, I think he's out taking care of some accidents right now, but, uh, oh, there he is.
Morning, Brian.
Morning.
How are you? What a lovely day. Dr. Workman.
Yeah, well, while we're here is, um, we've got a full-time jailer that's gonna be retiring in April, and, uh, we'd like to replace her with a full-time plus possibly two, two other full-timers. We're, we're having problems, uh, when we advertise for jailers, we're having problems getting anybody to actually apply. Uh, we've tried some college students from Iowa Central that are taking the criminal justice program, but then they've got, um, obligations with their school and stuff, and that causes problems. And when Brian makes out the schedule, then, you know, we gotta do a bunch of switching and stuff, and, you know, it's hard to find somebody to, you know, to fill in those positions. Um, what, what we'd like, like I said, uh, possible, we'd like to replace the, the one full-timer we got, plus possibly put two more, two more full-timers on. And of course, the benefits are a big thing.
Three full-time will complete your rotation, right?
We still have to have some part-time.
What's that, does that, uh, you didn't, I don't think you have a number of part-time, or what you think, if you got three full, is it just, eh, like a list, so that if someone needed to fill in, you have some people to check with?
Yeah, we probably make out the schedule for the full-timers and then plug them in.
So I mean, you have more than, he might have several part-time people, but if part-time is part-time, they're not gonna have a set schedule like the full-time.
Do you guarantee him in so many hours a week being part-time?
We have, said eight hours.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, uh, norm, one shift per day, per week. But I just, like I said, on the bottom there of the sheet, I just plugged in three full-timers and three part-timers.
Okay.
Just, uh, for a start anyhow.
What kind of training do you have to go through with those people, Dean? What qualifications do you have to have to get somebody to fly?
Well, within the first year, you've gotta send them to a forty-hour school down in Des Moines. Um, and of course, then we pay for all that, and we pay for the room and board and everything down there. And then every year, they have to take a twenty-hour, um, continuing education course to the law enforcement academy. Plus, that's not their uniforms and...
You're the same for the part-time, you for the full-time. So that'd be a little saving, not having to send six people away.
Yeah. Yep.
So your comment was, you, when you advertise for part-time, didn't work to get any, any applicants?
No, not really.
Agreeable or workable?
Yeah.
How, okay, how are you doing with getting three full-time people?
Well, we've had some interest down there from our jailers now, because some of them have been looking for something else.
Some of the part-time people would like to move up to full-time, so...
So, I mean, obviously...
They won't have the driving cost involved there either, so...
Yeah.
Better than, you feel, you guys feel pretty confident?
Yeah.
That you can get three, good, good full-time?
Yeah. Cause a lot, you know, benefits are, are big things, you know, services and stuff.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Meaning more than wages.
Yeah.
What is the requirement if there's nobody in jail? Do you just have them on-call, or what's, is somebody there all the time during the day?
We have somebody there all the time, cause there's some cleaning that can be done and some other little chores down there that can be done.
Plus it's...
Is it very often we haven't a leader?
No, we usually have s, we usually have a couple in there and stuff.
They're consistent.
Right now, we have one that's coming up, uh, this coming weekend, it's been there ninety days, we got another one with a net for fifty days, we got another one for sixty days.
Wow.
So, I mean, more, it appears to me that some more of them are being sentenced, maybe instead of halfway house to jail or extended period.
That's probably a pretty fair statement.
But, you know, it, you know, you can't really say we, we, you know, have so many a day, it kinda goes in spurts sometimes, we'll have one or two of them, sometimes we'll have six, seven, eight of them or something, I mean, it's just, you know, just how it goes.
And this weekend was further busy.
Does Colonel Viking fans didn't make playoffs?
Well, I think Dean's gotta get...
Be surprised.
I think, I think we have no choice but to try to get three to have full-timers. What you told us, I suggest you go ahead and do it. I know it's gonna be costly, but you can't cover it otherwise.
Well, my biggest thing is that, you know, if we do close the jail down and we realize it's gonna cost more to ship them somewhere if we can find room, uh, and then we decide to reopen it, we're gonna, like I said before, we're gonna have to tear that, that old facility down, cause we're grandfathered in now through the old rules, and if you tear that down and you put a new facility up, you're probably looking at putting three full-timers on each, each shift.
That's terrible.
That's what they have to do in Cusworth County and Wright County and...
Sure, cause, yeah, well, yeah, theirs is new enough, I'm betting the regulations on that are just mudding boggern, I guess. What about, you know, this is conjecture, but you get the three full-time people, I mean, I know it's tough to get any help, like part-time in particular, like you guys are fighting out everybody. Is there a possibility of going back to, you've got three full-time, if, down the road, I mean, you wouldn't be, not that you try to do it, but get a, back to a couple of full-time, cause if you had more part-time than someone, you know, is there flexibility in that? I mean, the reason I say that is the insurance part of it, if you don't have a full-time person, if they're, you know, I mean, this isn't set in stone, I mean, I imagine it's somewhat fluid, you just need to have the personnel, obviously. That's the thing, it'd be nice if you had two full-time, enough part-time, it's not quite the expenditure of three, but I understand why you gotta do it, I'm not arguing that, just if it is possible, is there flexibility to revert it back to two?
Well, I'm sure it probably is, I mean...
If, if, if something worked out, and maybe the full-time person said, I don't wanna be full-time, I wanna go back to part-time, you can get enough part-time people.
I would think so, yeah.
Not necessarily a set in stone deal with, uh, with, there's nothing that makes it that way.
Yeah, but you gotta realize, it takes a certain person to work that jail.
I'm sure it does.
I mean, you get yelled at and screamed at and called me...
Takes a certain person to be the sheriff, too.
Well, yeah, it's got its days, but...
But we all know that the benefit's really a huge part of everybody's life, so that's, if you're working part-time, doing something, you're looking for something...
Better.
As soon as you get tired doing something else, you're constantly looking...
Constantly looking for something better unless you're at the retirement age where you can only work so much.
And I think the staff we got, I mean, we've had them for, oh, a little while, I mean, quite a while.
Well, yeah, the, the last one was a year ago.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I would check in with the current ones we have and see, who would be interested in moving to that full-time position and see what we got without advertising right away, or if that would be able to cover it.
That's what we can do, uh...
Can you do that legally?
I think you have to advertise.
Well, I know, but you're at least hiring them then without sending them to Des Moines for a forty-hour course.
Yep.
They might be the best qualified.
Do we have to formally do anything to allow this?
Yeah, we, the other option is if you look at maybe just going two full-time and see how it works out, and then move up to three, or do you wanna just make the plunge into the full?
I think, sounds like these gentlemen have researched it, and they've checked into it, and the part-time is just, not that it's a good idea, it'd be nice to go to two full and have enough part, not working.
Well, the other side is, if she's gonna retire in April, we're already basically looking for three.
Yeah.
Cause you only got a couple of months before you're gonna be looking for her replacement.
Yeah.
So, start with, see what we got going, and that'd be my recommendation.
Go with the three.
Go with three. That's what, your plan is, is it now, right?
So I think we should, yeah. Cause that, I mean, we have a shift that starts at seven in the morning till three in the afternoon, three in the afternoon till eleven at night, and eleven at night till seven in the morning, so that'd be nice to have. And, and we found that out too, cause Joan, right now, works the day shift, and she, I mean, she takes care of a lot of the paperwork and stuff, and she went on some, a couple weeks of vacation, and we, you know, put some part-timers in there to fill them, and, I mean, it's...
Is there a chain of command between them employees, like there's someone that all vehicles?
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, yes, I utilize Joan a lot, because she's full-time experience. As a jail administrator, I have to have the stability of a person that's there at least five days a week, who knows what's coming and going, and, you know, when things come up, then she can address them with me, and we can move forward, but with part-time, nothing against them, you know, they, they come in and maybe work a shift, then they're off for two days.
Yeah, they get back to their exchange.
Yeah.
So Brian, you do have tasks with the responsibility, kinda looking after the jail employ, or, I guess employees is right, personnel.
Do you make it to jail?
Yep, that's part of my duties, I guess.
Well, if there's a motion to be made to move forward with the discussion of three full-time and then how many part-time, I would make that motion.
I'm gonna get a motion by Eric to, um, retire three full-time.
I'll second that.
And a second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Eric, workman. Motion carries.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Now we have a meeting with the, your staff, a lot of work done.
See what you can come up with, I'm sure you'll let us know.
I guess if you let us know, and then that way we can advertise accordingly, what, whatever we're gonna have to fill from there.
Yeah, cause now I can finish my, uh, my budget.
Oh, yeah. Brian, you'd be involved in advertising for any of these positions, wouldn't that fall on you, being the administrator of all this business? Yeah, yes. Good luck with it.
Thank you, Eric. Would now be a turn to mention, is there anything you can do about, and I've talked to Dean about it, and you guys remember, these idiot calls, you got a half a page or more in that home paper, and they are just ridiculous on them.
Yeah.
One of them was just terrible this week, couldn't even print it, it was fried.
Yeah.
Mean the noise.
I'm going nuts.
Jokes or what?
I don't know how you remedy that, I'm sure you guys would like to be rid of it.
Do you not, can you not have the people to call in, print their names, such and such calls, I better cut them in half? I don't know, illegally, do you get that, Dean?
Cut their names out, that'd be...
No, no, put their name...
Put their name in there?
Cut their calls, their names personal.
Hell, that might make them call in.
Well, that's kinda what I have to say, I'm thinking of, right now, with calls and stuff, cause people that call in and say, I wanna stay anonymous and stuff, but yet, we still feel like we need to go check it out, just in case, you know, something more develops out of it.
The other day on WHO, they played, uh, a person calling in, that she worked nights, and the wind was blowing, and she called nine-one-one and said, is there any way you can get the wind to stop blowing? And the wife, the, the person's like, you're kidding me, right? No, I gotta get up and work in a few hours, is there any way you can...
I think if you would even do a little piece in the paper, and a reminder, and, um, paper, please don't call, and list some of the idiot things, maybe people would catch on.
No, it might also make it work. They probably think, oh, I get my name in the paper, I better call.
If you would put the com, you can make the comments out of that paper.
If it can't, you need something more to do, you wanna start right now?
You know what, don't, I mean, I'd be coming page, I like to read that.
It's way worse.
Yeah, or years, years ago, we had to call nine-one-one, want to know what the lottery numbers were for Saturday.
Thank Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks Dean. Good point, Gary, yeah.
I mean, I agree with, I agree with Gary, it's just like a comic page, when you read the time thing.
But what do you do?
I don't know, I think you need to...
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's just too easy.
Just tell people who's taking pictures of everything they've run across, too.
Too easy to call in.
Can't do it.
And then you tie up the line for something that's important, that's that's right. Okay, well, we're way early, not way early.
No, we're doing really fine.
We got the sheriff office here.
Okay, so we go on down, and we'll, uh, do the bottom stuff here for a little bit. We have a acceptance place on file of certificates of appointment for the following offices. We have sheriff's office employees.
Okay, so there was a packet of ones that I stapled together, which was all sheriff's office employees. And these are people currently work in the sheriff's office. Um, for those of you who are new, elected officials, once they've been elected, were required to file a certificate of appointment to you guys, so that you know these people are who we are retaining into the next, our next term. And it doesn't mean they have to stay that entire time, they can leave, um, they can be fired, they can be let go, they can, you know, they're, um, but as of right now, we need to let you know what our staff is, and that's what these are.
And we'll go right down the list and do one at a time, I'm sure, to do separately. We do that whole list in one...
We do the whole list, if you want to.
And you get a motion to do the whole list.
I'd make the motion to accept all of those in the sheriff's department that is listed. I'll second that motion.
First and second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have authorized chairman to sign an extension agreement with the courthouse, sheriff deputies, and secondary roads.
Okay, just, just wanna clarify, you mentioned the whole group, but Bruce said just the sheriff's department. So that leaves the dispatcher's jailers.
Oh, okay.
Or did you...
I can read, say the motion, let's go to sheriff's employees, dispatchers, you want jailers in there too?
Yeah, you can do the whole.
The jailers still more.
Everybody underdign.
Underdign, yes.
And the reason we have a county attorney is not because he was up for office this year, but he noticed that his certificate appointment, the last time he filed, when it fired in December of sixteen, so he thought he better change it to what his term is, which is until December thirty-first of nineteen.
Okay, I have an amendment motion by Bruce.
I second that.
Dave, Dave followed up, all in favor?
Aye. We got sheriff's, dispatchers, jailers.
County attorney.
Audit body.
Audit body.
County attorney.
County attorney.
Okay, now we'll go down to authorized chairman to sign the extension agreement with the courthouse, sheriff's deputies, and secondary roads union contract.
Okay, so you have a copy of the agreement in front of you, this was, um, arranged by meeting, so I think about work and what's working and associates with the union, um, to extend the current contract that we have that doesn't expire until eighteen, this would, um, extend it to two thousand and twenty. Um, there's a in, insurance, a difference in there, and some wage increases for the three years you're extending the contract.
I think we talked about this when, was on the phone one day with Renee, and I think it's a good, I think, I moved, we approved the, the offer from the labor union.
And we have a motion by Carl.
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. Any other comments?
No, I agree with Carl, we, this was previously discussed, and we felt pretty comfortable at that time, I'd say we're good.
Alright.
It might be down the road that chapter twenty will change the insurance, but still a good thing to have a three-year settlement, I think.
Yeah, gives us a little stability here for them, what's coming up. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have acceptance place on file, others quarter report, ending December thirtieth twenty sixteen.
Okay, we have some copy fees, um, we have three hundred dollars in passports, um, we have flat books, three hundred and ninety dollars in flat books, and there's some missing fees, uh, one oh two twenty-six, so we made our total fees for the quarter of seven ninety-three and twenty-six. And I've often told these guys, we're not a money-making office, if you want us to make money, I'll have to go out and pick up pop cans off the road.
This is just report, the money you took in?
Yes.
We have to approve the money they took in?
Yeah, we have...
I have to report it to you.
And we approve and accept the report.
I would, uh, make a motion to accept this report.
Motion by Eric.
Second.
Second by Carl, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Acceptance place on file, sheriff's quarter report with quarter ending December thirtieth twenty sixteen.
And as you can see, the sheriff takes in considerably more money than we do, but he has service fees in there and weapons permits.
Probably been mollyed too, hauling people around.
Yeah.
I'd move in the acceptance place on file of quarter report from the sheriff's department.
I'll second that.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're not even taking any weapons permits, are we?
You aren't kidding.
Got acceptance place on file, treasurer's semi-annual report for December thirty-first twenty sixteen.
And if you have questions on this one, we'll probably have to ask the other commander. I can tell you the, the balance that you started with, the revenues are total, to be able to...
I guess we need the janitor's mantle.
Is there, well, you guys have seen this before, Peggy's seen it before, can I ask a question, if there's anything that's out of line or, or different than normal?
I don't see anything, but Jana might be able to point something out.
I would, you know, ask, or at least she can give us a highlight if there's something. There's no sense accepting it.
Sometimes she'll have things that she wants to point out to you.
Looks like drainage numbers up. That's understandable.
That's all you need, I guess, yeah.
Well, she told me that everything looks pretty standard, except we had a few more drainage, a little more drainage than I tell me I'm in, normal, so...
Just point of reference for me starting out, so, tell me just where that money comes from?
The drainage.
Yeah, how's that, this is...
From the levies that are levied out.
This is drainage districts, and then they pay whatever.
Is it a contractor?
Co, yeah, I don't, but quarterly, or, is this money coming to the treasurer's office?
Yes.
From the...
From the drainage districts, levied out to the landowners.
Yeah.
Either these people paying their taxes and their levy costs.
They're lev, that, that's what I was thinking.
Drainage assessments.
Or if some of them are underpaying a plan, where they're paying that every year.
Okay.
Like, if you have to do a project for a long way...
Right, I understand, you know, I mean, this is, I gotta piece all these things that I've learned thus far together, but this is, is it paid, everybody's probably on a little different schedule, do they pay, is it quarterly?
Gary, you probably know what it, is it yearly, semi-annually, or what?
You can pay in March and September. Or if you like, when sometimes it's probably, you can spread it over ten years.
I understand that.
Twenty, and then you pay in March and, and then September.
Usual tax times are...
The, the levies also, they're, they're assessment or levy, or whatever you wanna call it, okay.
Yeah.
Not everybody pays federal fees, some people pay federal fee, you pay later, some they...
Yeah, you can pay it anytime you want, it's just, it's due a certain date, otherwise you get a felony.
So that's where the bulk of that money is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I wouldn't make a motion to accept it as printed.
Got a motion by Bruce.
I'll second that.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acceptance place on file by fiscal year seventeen to eighteen compensation board recommendations.
As advised, that there would not be a member from the town board here to present this to you, um, town board met on Thursday. Yeah, anyway, for the attorney and for the sheriff, they recommended five percent. For the auditor, recorder, supervisors, and treasurer, they recommended three point five percent. And that's their recommendations.
I sat in that meeting just in the back row there, where Gary's setting lists and everything, and, I think they did the research, they took ten above and ten below our size counties and tried to keep us in the middle. I think they did a pretty good thorough job of discussing it anyway, I didn't see their data, but led me to believe they'd done the research. And if we as a supervisor to accept this, and we wanna lower something, we have to lower everybody's by the same percentage. For example, if we don't like, unless that law's changed, we don't like the sheriff's five percent, we lower it to four, everything else goes down a percent. We can't raise it, we can always lower it. So they tried to come in with something that would be acceptable, yes, cause they said, you know, we could shoot high and let the board lower it, but they thought they came up with a sensible recommendation. So I would move we accept the place on file, the compensation board report.
And the first by Carl, does anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? Yeah, I myself don't like that rule where everybody follows.
Yes, I don't either.
Say that again, Rick.
I don't like that rule where you, you have to, everybody's the same, you know, you gotta raise and lower it for everyone.
No, I agree, but...
You have to follow along.
You can't raise it, you can only lower it.
Yeah, I should say, lower it, same.
Yeah, but, at least Carl researched this, and they've tried to be fair about it, so there wasn't too much fiddling around we had to do, which, I don't know, I mean, I'm not on the compensation board, so I don't know how it does compare, but...
Yeah. It's a big responsibility to have, and, uh, they do put a lot of work into it.
They did their due ju diligence, and they didn't just pull these numbers by the air, so I guess I wouldn't argue.
Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, that up there says nine o'clock.
We don't have any at nine, do we?
We're in U and P time.
I didn't see any coming, so I had to get it up there.
I get a motion to go and drink.
I'll move.
Second.
First by Bruce, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
You're going to drink at nine o'clock.
I'll be drinking after Bill.
Not so bad, till I tried to stop south of West Bend, and I was glad there wasn't anything coming, but, no, it's...
Main highways are probably...
Main highways are quite good, yeah, this, and, and your guys have been out on the secondary roads, done the hills, the curves, and intersections, so...
Great. Terry's not here, so, I think he's one more minutes.
This has been on file for a while now, um, it's the recommendation of the appraisers for damages, um, right-of-way, I guess I should call it, um, basically, what was done was, uh, I'll let you look at the reports, there's multiple columns there, there's a description of the property, who the owner is...
Is that the high school going out south?
No.
No, this is one, yeah.
Okay, twenty-six of them, okay.
Right, right, yeah, yep, this is the one Denver did, um, we took permanent right-of-way to be like thirty feet over the top, uh, and paid, recommended paying eighteen hundred dollars an acre for that. It just gives you the right of an easement there, is all it does, they can farm it just like they always have. We also then took the entire disturbed area and, um, put that at five hundred and ninety-five dollars an acre. I may have gone over this, five hundred and ninety-five, I think I might have gone I may have gone over this, five hundred and ninety-five, I think I might have gone over this with you at one time. Both the commissioners or appraisers were farmers and we tried to adjust it for that. Yep, we ended up looking at three years affecting the crops. And then.
Was that the first?
Yes, and they are also some kind of actual loss for the construction year, this does not include that.
Yeah, that's not for crop damage.
No, that's not, you're right, correct, this is effect on future crops. And this is how we arrived at the five hundred and ninety-five dollars an acre, first year fifty percent loss. Figuring an average of two hundred bushels an acre otherwise for at three dollars and fifty cents a bushel, that was three hundred and fifty dollars per acre allowed the first year. Following construction, second year twenty-five percent loss on the same two hundred bushels an acre and three dollars and fifty cents a bushel. And then the third year ten percent loss. So that's how, that's what was applied for the temporary right-of-way where we disturbed the ground. Now, that was more than trench area, they have the trench area and then the areas along each side that they disturb, so. Hundred to hundred and forty feet, it varied depending on depth. Yeah, and then you can see what each parcel was allowed for permanent and temporary. Let's see the numbers, Gary, did you have any other claim? You were talking about depth and things, I know, did you have somebody put one together or how'd you look at it? Oh, okay, wow. It's an attempt by the appraisers to get it where it should be, is it exactly right, I don't know. You might need a soil scientist involved to know exactly.
These farmers got yield monitors, they know when they go across that.
Oh, yeah.
Lots of yield monitors go up and down.
Well, and that's why people like Gary do a lot of tiling, because they know the difference it makes putting that tile in the ground. And those yield monitors have been, I remember several years ago riding around with Dick Knave in a field. And he was pointing out on the monitor on how it was giving him an ongoing yield result and what that did for him, so. That's, that isn't a nutshell.
Someone like to make motion to accept the preliminary general report? Excuse me, the appraiser.
Well, can I get a point of clarification?
Sure.
Has, is this been done or going?
This was done a year ago.
This was done a year ago, sorry, Matt.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
No, I mean, I wasn't here a year ago.
This, this project was done, finished, when was the completion date?
Well, I don't, I don't even know.
I was trying to get the pipe out picked up since I've been on.
The extra pipe.
So it's been done.
It's been done a while, yeah.
And they did one crop off of the, the sound over the pipe that we did.
So is this year one, is that year one?
So fifteen would be the first year of the crop, sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen was the first year of crop.
So year one was this past year?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So we're at two and three.
Yeah, 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 so.
And this is for crop reduction due to disturbing.
That I understand, yeah, I just wanted to get the time, long and fine frame.
Yeah, these things get dug out like with the pipe deal like Bruce was mentioning, you know, it was there forever, yeah.
And is this a common practice?
Yes.
Typically, so they use it, get the project done, then they want to look.
Because you never know how wide the project's going to get.
Right, depends on the project.
Depends on how the contractor is, is keeping the work area neat and clean and they drive in from this place, they compact the soil and, you know, so we wait till the project is done and then they do this.
Yeah.
And who that, you said two farmers, how big of a group, committee, whatever?
It's an engineer and two landowners in the county.
Yeah, Melon's in the front there.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
They're active farmers.
Yes, very active, both of them.
Brent Keenest, Pat Hill.
Right.
Pat Hill and Brent Keenest, yep.
And that's common practice?
Yep, yeah, the law.
Well, you know, two years back when it had higher price corn, that number's way different.
Obviously.
You adjust it according to market.
That's why it's good to have active farmers involved, too.
Well, and is it looked at per project, in one guy's field or gal's field, is there, in there more, compacted? Is everything, is it kind of taken on a per acre basis?
Well, not so much if they're in there more, but the width.
Yeah, how much area did they disturb?
Right.
Yeah.
Eric, I want to show you one picture where they went through this one twenty-five. See, this is where they went through. And that's behind my place and it's about a hundred and what feet, I don't know.
Yeah.
But you see this area right here, how that's greener? That's where they piled the dirt, this is where they disturbed the dirt, see that's green over there? Because this is ultimately seeded after it was all done. Okay, the area that's lighter, that's where the disturbed ground was, that tells you they didn't get it back like it was, excuse me. And then this is an area that never had water standing before, that's where they come out and dug, could find nothing wrong except the ground was so compacted there, when they did this project, it was extremely wet, and they packed the ground back in. And the only reason that area drowned out is because the ground was just packed so hard, that's why it didn't come out. And then we had two other areas, now this is a farm that's well tiled, they've never been wet before. But we had worked the ground, so they didn't bother, I used to them forget, we'd fix it ourselves, this area right here, that's got tile on it. So they just, they fixed this one and there was nothing wrong, it was just from compaction, these are going to have to deal with themselves.
Obviously, this was looked at by.
Yes, and this would be, Gary's would be a good one to watch and see how the cross section, it should help each year, but it, will three years be enough?
Right.
Well, that was my question, if we accept this, is three years, or if in the end of the third year, he's still getting, have they, have they been willing to go in there and adjust that? Or?
I don't know how you would, I guess.
I don't, that's what I'm asking, because I don't know anything about it.
Well, that's why I asked if it was on a per, you know, sounds to me like they're taking width, getting it to an acre amount for the thing.
There's so many other factors involved, you know, like what kind of year was it, was it wet so everybody had some loss? Was it dry, too dry, so everybody had loss, so it's hard to, they're trying to come up with an average.
And, you know, in Eric's case, it was thirty foot deep in spots.
Right, and that serves a lot of dirt, right.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's, it's hard to make it fair.
Yeah.
Soil, soil tends to heal, but it takes time.
Right, and I, I think I understand Bruce's, is this, if you approve it, is it kind of a done deal, we've done one year? You know, we have two left at these percentages and amounts, is there any recourse? You know, obviously, and I'm not picking on Gary here by any stretch, but, you know, if there's recourse, then everybody's going to want recourse. Well, look at that, it's screwed up yet, you know, you did that four years ago and it's still a mess, yeah, you open up a can of worms, but I know we don't want to keep dragging past history if we can help it, but.
The deal is, my farm is the worst probably because it's twenty to thirty feet deep, the rest of them are not that deep, but they have to through my farm.
Right, I understand.
It'll be the one that'll be affected probably if it is passed through.
Yeah, that's.
Right, well, that's fair, but so, you know, this isn't, you know, those other projects are going to be done, you know, I'm just asking, you know, if that's.
Unless prices change a lot, this is the same kind of thing we'll come back with on DD six tile down by Thor, it's, yeah, it's common practice.
Right.
Trying to be fair, trying to allow enough time, but Gary's right, his will be the most effective.
Well, understandably, yeah, more than you dig.
That's why I'd be real interested in how that does develop over the next couple of years. That might be one to use as a reference, you know, for deep areas.
Right.
Maybe we need to do more years in the future, I don't know, I'm hoping it heals itself enough that by the fourth year it's made it.
Time does normally heal all wounds, maybe dirt, soil disturbance included, but, right.
It helps.
I just, you know, I'm just asking, I don't know, so some of these questions I need background on just because I haven't been through all this.
Another thing you don't know is going to happen is the freeze thaw cycles, how many of them do you get, how deep does the frost grow?
We understand that, every year is different.
Yeah.
This year is different, way different than last year, so we understand that.
You don't really think about you guys, it's picking up rocks, you would understand, Eric.
I understand rocks.
But I mean, we picked up rocks, I know the guys, we're down there with the rangers three times at least, picking up rocks and we work it again, pick them up again. And that will continue for a couple of years, because they put a pipeline to our farm years ago and we picked up rocks quite a lot.
The good thing is less than three acres.
Same way you can dial.
Yeah, yeah, at least it's a relatively small area compared to.
Well, I'm not much for dragging stuff on and dredging stuff back up, but I just, you know, if this was looked at and if it's a fair thing, but yeah, we know that there is different when you put in a project, it's not, some maybe are very stable all the way across, some of them probably huge differences from one end to the other.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And I don't want it dredging back up and being fighting about it two, three years down the road, if we can look at it now and make sure it's right and, or, and/or make an allowance if there's something that's got to be done different than the way it's been done, so that's just a.
I would hope by next year, it seems a combining season that will have a pretty good indication as to what it did from this year to next.
Yes, yes, and I'd be very interested in talking to Gary after that, to see what the situation is.
And I'm sure he will.
Yeah, so.
So I'd make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second it.
Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we move on to view number three, accept the preliminary general report and second by.
I'm gonna, I didn't want to try to get it all in.
You wanted to skate in with?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, didn't drop him this morning.
There you go, right.
If Trish would have been here, I wanted to ask, she's thick, on DD two. Nothing's happening on that sinkwell, but on the own part.
Yeah, why is Rod on there?
Is that Rod, there's three people in it?
Three people. And, uh, lost Rod eight thousand dollars. With the three ways, but we don't see any lumen on it. Trish said it was up to me, John bought it worth it.
John Beatty?
Yeah, she was trying to get a ruling on him because it's different landowners and a couple of them have been split, so it's not just three owners anymore.
Yeah, but I told her it's pretty much the same, Doug often, uh, it's the same, the county's the same. Our farm's the same except for the acre there, and I told her just forget that. Just hang on and get it taken care of.
That was what one, number Gary?
DD two. And that's the one that we was going to try to get a whole Sunday with the camera, run down the lane, see why I got problems with the main, because that's what they were having on.
We're, we're going to have discussions on costly purchasing a camera, just the county can own and take it more accessible for these type of projects. I think much tiling and culvert that under roads and drainage issues we have, I think it'd be a good investment.
Yeah, it's, I know they are expensive.
Yeah, it's so expensive to bring somebody in.
Well, yeah, well, first off, they got junk two hours away.
Yeah. I thought I'd found another contractor with a camera and they were broke down and weren't sure they were going to fix it.
What worries me most, is Eric, every time you call them, their camera's broken down. I wonder if they're just, the technology is poor yet, or they just don't handle them well, or?
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, there was petition signed to clean out district three, this is down by Thor, um, basically south of Thor.
Right on the, the stop sign there, the one that goes south, or is that further south?
Yes, here's Thor, um, here's the south and it goes along the road and up, and then it goes east and Rick has ridden this and there were beaver dams in here. But it's, it goes right on.
Right along the highway?
Yeah, 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 it's right along the road.
You look in there, the bottoms are really flat, all grassed in.
Yeah, yeah.
They're very poor, poor grade.
Oh, it doesn't have a lot of grade, no, that's right.
So is this the one that we had issues right there at the corner in town, wasn't there something that we thought was higher than, it was higher than ours?
Oh, that's south of where it crosses the black town.
All right.
The people in the area think the pipe going through the road is too high.
Too high.
It was installed too high back when it was installed as a.
Oh, that's why I thought it was just it.
That, that is the thing.
You're talking, okay.
Now, that's, it appears that what had happened is some time ago it was over dug, both west of that culvert and north of the culvert, from what we can tell.
From your survey.
Yeah, yep, yeah, we've had people in the bottom of this all the way through this length getting elevations, getting pipes that are damaged. And we found a lot of pipe, and I'll have, right here. And I brought three of these, this is, there's so much to this, I didn't make copies for every one of the actual reports, but, um.
Is that draining that deep ground south that Thor there?
Yeah.
The second page shows a lot bigger aerial photograph with, I mean, it's on the backside of the first page. There's not a lot of dirt in the bottom of this, but it is like over forty-six hundred cubic yards, so it adds up. The good thing this one has going for it is there's a lot of acres sharing in the cost, so even though the total cost got up between ninety-five and ninety-six thousand, it's just over eleven dollars an acre, average cost. It is a clean out, it's a repair, it's basically mandatory that you do the repair when it's found that it needs it. And what I'd like you to think about right now is the possibility of having the bid letting right after the hearing, since you have to go forward. That would allow us to have the bid letting yet in February, which I think would be a good thing. Minimum time from this submitted until you have the hearing is forty days, so they usually go six weeks, so it falls on a Monday again, and I think that's February twenty-seventh. So, um, glad to answer any questions, the basic procedure is to accept the report and set the hearing date and then Trish would get notice out. You have to set the hearing at least forty days out, and, but then you have to get a notice mailed to the landowners and it published at least twenty days ahead of the hearing, so. Forty days out for the hearing and then back off twenty and you have to have it published and a letter mailed at least that date, so.
Because actually, the last time Mrs. Clean was nineteen sixty.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Wow.
Times it's completed in nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-five to sixty-eight, must have cost about eight or seven thousand, huh?
Yeah, see, they, I, I, I feel like they overdid it then, to be that high priced at that time.
I think there's a lot of trees and stuff back.
That would do it, too, that would do it, trees can double or triple a project pretty quickly, the cost.
Well, I'm not so sure, right down there in the curve, south by the stop sign that went, meanders off to the east, there might be some trees along there yet that.
Small trees.
Yeah.
Oh.
That we might want to get yanked out of there, but.
Well, if they're on the right way.
They would do that, wouldn't they?
Yes, yes, yeah, we don't have a tree count on it, I don't know if it was just kind of an area it had it or what, or if they thought it was outside. But anything we come across like that, we would take care of, absolutely.
So you said February, the forty days would put you where, February twenty-seventh?
Counting, if I counted correctly.
Off our east to the down.
To where it ties into the going south, and we might have to go a little bit south just to an hour late. Yeah, at the west.
What about that piece going off to the northeast?
Wasn't part of the petition.
Wasn't part of the.
But if we're finding problems with it, it's real easy to add something like that, pretty inexpensive to add another footage of open ditch while they're there.
Especially if you wouldn't have to relocate to come back to do it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It looks about like that, that's the rest of it.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's really worth considering strongly.
That's another mile.
Where does that go east from, or where?
It goes north, off to the northeast across that section all the way over to the other corner.
Here's where it starts and this is heading off, right here.
Oh, it's right here.
Yeah, you can barely see it right there where it starts off, yeah. And we checked.
Is that as deep all the way out, I haven't, I haven't ever went along that out there, is that as deep as it is along the black town?
It's a, it's a deep ditch, and it's pretty flat, that's what I know.
It's really flat, yeah. Three hundreds percent on some of it if I remember, so it's, you know, half an inch and a hundred deep.
Because once it gets to this corner, where it turns and follows the road and goes south, the wa, the ditch narrows up and the water runs much faster through there, so there's more fall through there.
And we've checked all the way down and there is fall, it's a little incom, you know, it varies some, but yes, there is fall the rest of the way down. So that helps, you're right, you're absolutely right in what you saw out there. This was, this was petition to establish in nineteen oh four, now I have to say nineteen since we're past two thousand four, but nineteen oh four, and then was actually established in nineteen oh five, so it's basically the third district established in Humboldt County was in nineteen oh. So it's basically the third district established in Humboldt County was in nineteen oh-five, so, a lot of history there.
So is this, is that old pine's bend site there, is that one more mile?
Yeah, that's old pine's bend site right there.
What is north of there?
Yeah, straight line.
And if you wanna think about that bidding at the, on the same day a little bit, I can, I'll be back with plans and specs for that and, and ask for your approval of that date. We wanna get the contractors notified a couple of weeks ahead of time.
We have to do it, why, why do we game away?
Nothing I can think of, um, yeah, I, I, it makes a very smooth project that way. Now, one thing also I'm, I, I wanna think about a little bit is how long to allow between bids, 'cause I'm, we're gonna go over three dash forty-seven here also, and we're gonna go over DD four. I'd like to allow enough time between bids, so the low bidder can lower his on the next one, or people who didn't get it can lower theirs on the next one and try and get it. I don't know if that's a half hour between, 'cause I think we'll be able to read the bids and check the calculations in fifteen minutes probably each. Um, so maybe a half hour's enough, maybe we need to allow forty-five minutes between, but I can come back and we can have that a topic of discussion and, and a...
No, I think it's a good idea, like you say, to spread the bidding out on these, these projects, it does, and, um, which one is the smaller one of the three?
Um, let's see.
Probably a three forty-seven, isn't it?
No, actually, it's a, it's a little more because there's more dirt. There's over fourteen thousand yards of dirt on that one, and then on Thor, let me look at that one. It's a little more yet, it's almost sixteen thousand yards of dirt.
Is this the smaller one?
This is the smaller one of the three.
Do that in person, so.
So, yeah, it's a matter of accepting the report and setting the hearing date, and then we can ask, we can discuss the bid letting at another meeting coming up.
Nice report, makes sense. The only thing, the very last thing about the reclassification.
Yeah, and I don't, this one, I think, uh, I, I asked Trish about this last week, and she checked, and she didn't think this had ever been reclassified, um, which...
Did that change anything significantly?
Oh, yeah. From the very, that's a good point, you haven't seen these old ones. On the old, original classifications, the people like right on the ditch probably paid ninety percent of the cost. Um, and now almost everything gets tiled, so they're all using the ditch. Uh, so over the years, the, the, what people pay has increased for those that were further away, and has decreased for those right at the ditch. It's still a lot more right at the ditch because it's soil that needs it worse. Um, but, for example, uh, nickel or Webster is more than like a Clarion, 'cause a Clarion is typically has slopes on it, drains better. You do have side hill seats, and people tile those, so they still pay a fair, fairly good cost, but not like they do down below.
Was there any people getting benefit there in our district now?
Uh, this one, we haven't really found, uh, anything. Um, I have something on, uh, sub five of eleven where we've, uh, got some change in boundary that we're gonna look at, but...
And also, this, you know, I think you noticed earlier, it was like eleven dollars an acre was the cost. So if they do bring in a few more acres...
Well, I just, I, yeah, it's not a, I mean, everything looks, I just, when, I don't like not knowing what's going on, when it mentions reclassification, is that gonna go wrench anything, is that gonna be...
I myself would like to see a reclassification, 'cause it brings in people that are using the ditch, yeah.
Well, and that's, yeah, and I understand that, and obviously...
Before, they weren't banned, but now they've tiled their fields and are using the ditch, so they probably...
Would it just, in essence, make the drainage district larger?
It can, we don't know for sure without going through, yeah, some.
It will.
Yeah.
It'll bring in a few more acres, and it'll change what people pay on their acres, 'cause it's figured different now than it used to be.
Right, so this amount is figured on where it's classified to date.
Yes.
So my only thing is, where do you see this reclassification?
It could be started anytime, that maybe should be a topic of discussion.
Should it be done, should it be done now, you know, we're dealing with this, now's the time to do it, isn't it?
The benefit to doing the reclass early, or starting it early, you get it levied faster.
Yeah.
So you're not drawing the six percent interest.
Right, so that's why I say, that's my only thing I don't see fitting together in this, is if we need to...
And our reclassification work this winter is going faster than we thought it would. You can see I have it less than two dollars an acre here. Um, it's just, we've gotten really efficient at it, um, so it isn't a huge cost to people.
No, it doesn't need to be done now, that's...
It'd be better, like Rick says, you can levy sooner if it's all done and the hearings are through, all of that, so.
Again, we're kinda familiar, we're starting a little bit of a precedent, 'cause you approved this, we get through with it, goes good, you don't wanna necessarily reclassify it after the fact, you know.
Rather do it... It just pushes it back another six months.
Can we incorporate that then, so we get the reclassification, we do the project, we just get the whole thing moving forward?
It's part of the report, I guess, um, yeah. And we know it's unbalanced because it's so old, and the board on their discretion can decide to reclassify any district.
It says, uh, not mandatory, highly considered, that's where I'm at, right now, in the last sentence. I'd say do it.
We'd like to see it done, and everybody'd have a way better idea than on the cost, 'cause even at eleven dollars and four cents, some could be twenty dollars, some could be five dollars an acre, and then they'd know.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I, I have knowledge, stopping at reclassified drainage ditch and head discussion, but, you know, it's gonna be done accurately, and it's gonna be done fairly, and if it's, the, the recommendation...
I mean, there, there's no form of remonstrance on this, I mean, and, anyway, but it, what it does, it just speeds up the process, so we can get the levy done, cut the six percent interest.
Yeah, well, I'm, that's good, so it, it does bring in a little bit more, and it may be not that big of a cost, it's, it speeds it along, it gets it done, it's, it sounds like a good deal, I'd...
Rick, was it, in sixty-five, was it done with the same amount of acres, the eighty-seven?
It should've been, yeah.
Well, the cost on that was like ten dollars and, and, uh, seven cents, as opposed to fifty-one years later, was, was it seven dollars?
Yeah, I, I...
I mean, I...
Might overcharge back then, huh?
Yeah, well, maybe.
Eleven oh-four, so you look at roughly ninety, what, three cents, ninety-six?
Yeah, I wish my cost had gone up that little.
I just wanna see this whole thing put together and moved forward.
Rapidly.
Yes, I see that reclassification moving forward.
Well, I think what we probably have to do, we have to, um, accept this engineering port and then have a motion to do a reclassification, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Definitely.
And then we also have to set, set a hearing date.
Did you count your forty days?
Yeah, there is clear forty days, it's like forty-two.
Forty-two, yeah.
We go six weeks, it makes sure you, yeah.
Set that for the twenty-seventh of February then?
What time would you like it?
I'm totally open that for us, so...
Not even working for you?
Yes, works real good.
Nine o'clock?
That's much, we'll, we'll once you're up to eight thirty-nine.
You won't be here that day.
Nine o'clock. Wanna make a motion to that?
And on the twentieth?
I'll make that motion at nine o'clock.
February twenty-seven, okay. And then do we have a second on the move, on that, nine o'clock?
And that would be for number three, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Checking, checking the car, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now I need a motion for the reclassification of DD two.
I approve.
Eric?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bruce. Any more discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm gonna leave a copy of these with Trish and an extra one for the counter, probably hang on to one, we can get more copies of these made, but it's just, uh, cost, yeah.
Don't make any more comments about it, that's like, we, we got pretty good reception on this.
Yeah, yep, yep, you sure did, so.
Okay. It's going pretty well on schedule, surprisingly.
Oh, yeah.
You're running a tight ship, Rick.
DD, Humboldt County, Wright, three dash forty-seven.
Where would this be?
I have trouble with this one.
Well, they're right next to the right county.
South of, uh, Brenwood.
South of Brenwood. There you go.
South of Brenwood. Right on seventeen.
Seventeen, and then it heads west one, two miles, and it kinda lies out in the second mile.
Yeah, towards Harold, that grass there.
Yeah, it gets over there and drains toward County Bank, just about.
Yeah, seventeen, I think this is seventeen, wait.
Uh, yep, that's Wright County, Humboldt County line, highway seventeen.
Okay.
And how far are we going this, all the way to the, the bulkheads?
Yes, yes, we are. Um, if you can see that on the, um, mat or not, the...
And you said this one's deeper, more dirt?
Yep, this one's more dirt.
Spected?
Yep. We've, uh, again, we've been in this one to measure, uh, where the bottom is and figure out where the bottom's supposed to be. And we split this one between the main ditch and lateral A. Now, we may levy this all together, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna work that out with Trish and Doug on the best way to handle this, but... Together, there's about twenty thousand yards of dirt, um, so that's, uh...
Was the petition for lateral A also?
Uh, yeah, there was a petition, let's see, I didn't bring a file in here, I guess. Yeah, there was a petition to clean this out, um, and it was for both of them, so, um... Well, I think we need to give them an opportunity to set the date, I'll get a copy over there to them, uh, to agree to the date, I guess, is what I'm thinking. Um, it's repair, it's not as big a deal, 'cause we, we know what's needed, there's no remonstrance. But, yeah, they, probably formal action. Ninety-nine percent of the work will be in Humboldt County. Yeah, but, yes, you're right, we, we need to give them an opportunity to be involved.
Okay. He was mine. We'll get him back over here.
He's almost a big deal, huh?
I'll get a phone call this afternoon.
Uh, well, the wording at, the introduction of this is confusing, but we worded it just like it did in original establishment, but it, basically, the report was done in nineteen ten, and a petition was filed previous to that. Um, commissioner's appointed, um, and the route you see is the route that was done originally. Um, I don't know if we have costs on more recent ones than this one or not. Yeah, there was a project in nineteen seventy-two, it was completed in nineteen seventy-two. Repair work and cleaning out, so, uh, seventy-two, yeah.
Is there, did I know there was a culvert out in the middle of the section of the field, drive across it?
Uh, probably, um, is that this, that one?
Yeah, I spotted it on that, I thought I did, anyway.
You probably did, I don't remember. That's, that's a road crossing. That's a road crossing. Uh, yeah, this is a field crossing here.
Yeah.
Um, seventy-two inch pipe, yeah, sixty feet of it, it's...
An adequate size.
Uh, it appears to be, we'll verify that. That's part of what we do in the final design, is verify those. Um, the, the general consensus under any attorneys is that that pipe is a landowner's responsibility. You can take it out and clean the ditch, but it's their, their responsibility to put it back in or get one in the right size, so, um...
Well, is it, I guess when Rick asks the right size, according to it, back in the nineteen, now, is it big enough to carry some of the equipment, the equipment that goes, I guess, would be might?
Typically, the strength is there, it's rare for us to find one that isn't strong enough to carry.
Used enough.
Right, right.
Sometimes these things are no longer used, and if they're no longer used, we should rip them out.
There you go.
Or don't want them.
Yep, there you go.
'Cause it's just holds back water.
That's right.
Question on that, so this is a bridge across the ditch.
A culvert.
Culvert.
A culvert, well, any, any culvert bridge, what, if, if it's no longer used, and you're doing a project like this, who pays for getting rid of something that isn't wanted or needed?
We, it's usually worthwhile enough to the project that we...
It's included in the title, huh?
Yeah.
Just wondering if it went back to the landlord, and he said, no, I, I agree, don't use it, don't want it, shouldn't get rid of it, he doesn't get, he doesn't have to pay for that.
No, no.
Except if it, if it goes back to the tire.
Right, 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 yeah, small piece of it in the end, yep.
But that's something I want, I want you to check out, make sure, they, they no longer want it, it's getting out of there, because it just...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just asking...
Especially in the spring with ice and stuff, or crop residue or whatever, happens any time. Yeah.
What move, we accept the Columbia Engineering Report for DD three and forty-seven, and verify the date with Wright County, and set the hearing date as February twenty-sixth.
I'll second it.
First and second, any more discussion on it?
Do you want a time on that?
Yes, we do. Well, we had the one at nine, should we go nine thirty?
Are there gonna be a timer between them, did you want nine forty-five?
Well, I think it'd be, this, I'm looking at maybe having these hearings fairly close together, and then we do the bidding process.
After that?
Yeah, yeah, not have a hearing and a bid, and a hearing and a bid, and a hearing and a bid. I think that'd just be a little confusing, and it'd make contractors sit around longer, and, yeah. Um, so I don't, I don't think it's gonna take a long time for each of these.
I don't think so, fifteen minutes should be enough.
I think so.
'Cause I, I don't think there's too many people in the area that are opposed to this, you know, and we're gonna have a lot of discussion on it.
Right, costs are not high, it's needed, uh, it's pretty obvious it's needed, yeah.
And Wright County would be minimally, should be on board?
Oh, it should, should be hard at any cost to any of their landowners.
They won't get much from that.
Yeah.
Well, and go at nine fifteen, or make that one, is it nine fifteen?
Only a discussion for the report, it says the same thing about the reclassification.
Let's, let's do this, and we'll talk about that.
Okay, well, I just didn't know, yeah, the discussion, I just, okay.
Okay. All in favor of nine fifteen on the twenty-seventh for DD three, three seven Wright?
Three seven.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, it was discussed of, we did that, though, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
Um, you did forget one.
I know, I know.
Part of the recommendations, so it'd probably be all right.
Since it's recommended in the report. I just got the one in the box.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to that effect on the report?
I would make that motion for the reclassification on said district.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? You know, this hasn't been done since nineteen, since it was developed.
Yeah.
Nineteen oh-seven.
Yeah.
To nineteen ten, I guess is when it was done. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, I'll leave at least two of these here, if anybody wants one.
Number four, accept the engineering, engineering port, set hearing B, DD four, which is about a mile south of party.
Yeah, and actually, that's where, um, Doug Marshall did that pipe work out by the railroad just east of town, that's the branch of Thor. And, uh, you'll, you'll see it on the plans that we are...
Right by where?
Yeah, just north of Burman Falls, that's part of it. It's really a, you know, it cuts and lies a couple of times up there.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, and I had the guys check and show me where some of the radials were, because this has some of lateral two, four, five, and six, I think. And one, two, and three start further to the west, but the petition again was to start, where you see the yellow line and the red... But the petition again was to start, where you see the yellow line and the red line coming together on the left side of the drawing. Um, that's, that's the outlet. We checked downstream from there, and there's adequate fall for that, uh, to outlet. Um, I think it might have been, we're going to submit a petition for this, as I remember. And they were very good about calling when crops were out, so we could go back and get the elevations next to the...
From that, why it doesn't need to be cleaned any further?
We figured about two hundred feet would deleter, and we're just gonna have the contractor do that. Um, yeah, we looked at it again downstream. We try and look downstream every time to just be sure of what we've got, um, so that the, no matter what the petition says, if we can just go a short distance further, we just do it, so, um... This one, uh, four more yardage again, almost sixteen thousand, um, and not as many acres as some of the others, so the cost is a little higher, but it's still just between twenty-two and twenty-three dollars an acre. Um, and we have not found any reclassifications for this. I think Trish was gonna dig a little more, but, uh, at any rate, it's long enough ago, it's probably at least thirty or forty years ago, if it was done at all. And think how things have changed in that time, but, um, same procedure as far as, um, setting a hearing date, and, and then deciding how you're gonna handle the reclassification.
I'd make a motion to make accept number four, primary hearing.
Second that.
All in favor?
February twenty-seventh also.
And, yeah, if that's gonna fit in at the...
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty category?
Yeah.
How good are you, Rick?
Absolutely.
Nine thirty?
You say, Rick, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're the, you're, we're gonna be here.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Okay, I heard Bruce's motion, and there was a second, but I didn't hear where it come from, okay.
Any more discussion on this, D number four? Um, well, I can just refresh my memory here, Rick. This tile line here, have they done the repairs to that?
No.
That's coming up.
That's coming up. Hey, what we're hoping to do is include that in our bid, but the people just on that would pay for that replacement. We're planning to do a repair by replacement, that it's broken down badly, it's extremely shallow. We're gonna put in the same-sized pipe, but move it a little bit to get a little cover on it, and get it extended across the road to the east. So the intent is to bid it, but have D D, uh, the lateral five people pay for it, so...
Okay.
We've got a profile plan, we've got a location of the existing one, because there's blowouts on it, uh, it's, yeah, it's not working well at all.
Are you gonna be able to lower that pipe?
A little bit.
Just a little bit?
Yeah, yep, 'cause now we know where the ditch should be, and we're gonna get it down to that depth, and I think we got it like a foot off the bottom, and still got it slightly deeper, so...
Do you ever looked at that oval pipe they, we're pushing down at that meeting?
Um, we've put in some oval, but not, yeah, um...
Get more clearance.
Mm-hmm, and there's times, we've done two smaller pipes, we've done the oval pipe. It's unbelievable, the oval, oval pipe is almost twice as expensive as the equivalent round pipe, yeah. Well, you think about lot more steel, you know, it's a squished pipe, basically, yeah.
Make as much of it.
E- exactly, yeah, all, all correct points affecting it.
Okay, we have a first and second on D D four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You gonna consider bid A on that same day?
Yes, uh...
You said the last first, seven to eight?
Date of nine thirty.
Nine thirty, on February twenty-seventh.
And then what I'll probably do is come back with recommendations on the bidding, and, and maybe ten-ish or something, and ten thirty, eleven, but I'll get on the agenda again to have more discussion on that.
Now, and all these projects are, I'm sure there'll be a bunch of pipes replaced, ditch bank pipes.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna have a, they, uh, they're all to be put in according to specs.
Yes, yes, yep. We're gonna get there every day if possible, I, they could be three or four Humboldt projects going on at once, so we're gonna make the circle and be checking them, um, keeping a good eye on things. We just, we've just gotta do it, it's, you know, nine times out of ten, you're okay with the contractor...
The other thing is, is, uh, do we hire someone that isn't, you know, like one of our retired guys that runs a maintainer in the wintertime? Something like that work for him to, would he have knowledge, or they have knowledge, to drive around and make sure that things are going according to, or would you know?
There's a, well, there's a lot they can do, but we actually get down and check the elevation of the ditch.
Right.
Uh, with GPS, um, that'd be something that'd be very hard for them, I think, but, um...
Well, the issue we usually have is, I have my field used to drain here before we did the project, and now you clean the ditch, my field don't drain, and you find out they just took the pipe and ripped it out, never replaced it.
Mm-hmm.
Those things we don't want to happen.
Oh, my gosh, for sure.
Question, yeah, who does keep an eye on this, and understand Bruce's concern, and, yeah, I mean, not everybody's an engineer, but sometimes, speaking back to what Rick said, it's just a matter of, you know, you're watching that, and...
Yeah.
Man, that thing's gone, and I see it never got fixed or replaced, and, yeah, there's too many projects that have gone on through the county, that really the simplest thing was, it was goofed up during the project.
Yeah.
And of course, it's gonna come back to haunt ya, you know, haunt us, haunt everyone.
But, but then again, you get to the issue, these guys have been digging on this ditch for three months.
I know, but that's why Bruce is, I agree with this, of keeping an eye on it.
You get a guy out there charging you a hundred bucks an hour for three months.
Well, we can't actually do that, but...
They can't afford it.
What, what's the, what's the, I don't even ask him for a solution, but what's a better idea to alleviate...
Let me just throw something out. I think that probably somebody local could watch a lot of it. I think we could tell them several things to watch for, like with an open ditch, you don't want it cut too steep on the far side. We wanna be sure they dig from both sides. We wanna be sure they don't, if they tear out a pipe, it gets replaced. Um, but as far as checking the elevation and checking the slope, and things...
Well, that's for sure, but there's enough people around that have a modicum of common sense...
Oh, yeah.
To know that, 'cause obviously, if they see a damaged pipe outlet, you know, to be a tile outlet, and it's just looking like that's not getting addressed correctly, they have enough knowledge to call...
Absolutely, yeah.
...an engineer to have this looked at. It's just, it's not a matter of asking them to be an expert on anything.
No, no, no.
It's a set of eyes on the project, so that we don't end up backtracking down the road, 'cause that's gonna just cost everybody more money.
Well, the flip side is, is the farmers out there, 'cause most of them are interested enough, they wanna be out there looking, so...
I was gonna say, the landlords ought to take care of it.
Yeah, they ought to be able to come out there and make sure that I have a tin whistle coming out, and my drainage is there.
If those don't, if my farm infects my drainage, I should be watching it.
I'd be making sure that...
Is it, is it fair, 'cause mostly, it will be the farmers, 'cause it, that's who it's affecting, so, and, and they will be watching.
I would hope that it would be.
Yes, this would be a good thing to discuss at the hearings.
Right.
Excellent thing to talk at the hearings. Are you willing to, or you, you may be out there anywhere, are you willing to look and...
Make a report back to us that...
Yeah, exactly.
Have a tin whistle when they went through the first thing, now it's not there, so something's not right, 'cause we don't need to know that next July, when it's...
Precisely.
For a year.
Is it fair, that's a hearing discussion?
Yes, yes, by all means, yeah.
I mean, I don't, that's great, and make a point of it, and report back to the board of supervisor, or your local supervisor, so it gets brought up then, not that down the road, 'cause that's too many of these things.
I think we need to put the monkey on the landlord's back, you know, they're, they're one's concern, they ought to, I mean, watch it and report it.
And like for the landlord, most people would be, but it's not the same for farms, whoever it is. Yeah, mhm.
We can't do everything for everybody.
Well, we have to do something for somebody, so, making a mo, or, uh, uh, idea of that, yes, if there's a concern, bring it up immediately, someone will address it then, not three years down the road.
Yeah, not after the guy's loaded up his equipment and whatnot.
Right, yeah, he might got, he might have got a little further down the way, so, but he's not gone.
Exactly, yeah.
There's, yeah, there's precedent that things have gotten screwed up, nothing's perfect, you know, even to the best, and that might be the best...
Anyway, and some of those pipes were put in in nineteen-twenty.
Right, yeah.
And it failed in nineteen-forty, and it's been buried for how many years, and it never did work.
Yeah.
Well, the other side of that point is, Rick, what do we, what is the distance that a tin whistle hangs out in a ditch after it's been cleaned? I mean, when it's six, eight foot out there and nothing underneath it, that, we get ice and snow and moving, it'll break them off.
That's right.
So, do we know what the distance is?
Two to four feet is, is the best. I mean, they're twenty foot long, and we, years ago, we made it so they have to have either riveted or welded joints, because they used to make an interlocking joint on these corrugated pipe, and they'd unravel four. Yeah, they were bad. They'd rust, and then it'd unravel, so we do that, and then we monitor how far out they stick.
'Cause that door block top, well, there, if you're, like, driving by in a semi, and you can look up, there's a lot of them that have been clear over, and I think you're gonna have to be, some of them are gonna be replaced.
We'd like to get them down closer to the bottom, um, with the ice flows in the spring, you know, the very bottom isn't, doesn't have a lot of ice in it, and that helps.
Right.
And if you don't have it out too far, there's enough strength in the pipe to...
But there's still water running in some of these tile.
Yeah, it's amazing.
So...
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, just make, make sure you remind each other to do that.
I will.
Okay, and you're not reclassifying this one?
That's another question.
I didn't want, you know, I never know when to bring that up.
No, no, it was, it was on the bottom of the report, um, you're looking at how many acres, there's a bunch of acres here.
Yeah, this one's more acres.
This is a bigger, bigger one.
And I, and I think to make it fair to all the landowners involved, we would do it good, yeah.
Yeah, this is sixty-six hundred acres.
I agree, I mean, obviously, they didn't, Rick doesn't do anything facetiously, and does it in good faith and best engineering knowledge, and that's in the report. Reclassification is something we need to look at, there need to be...
In fact, if you pull in more acres, you have the ability to drop the guard.
Yeah, yes.
So, I'd make a motion to re, go ahead and reclassify.
I would second that.
Any more discussion on the topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Look at that, one minute early, he put it on a range.
That's right, just look at it!
Mr. Chairman, Ford Glide Range, I promised Marc, uh, Marc Quan to bring it to the whole board. He called me again the other day, wanted to know if he could pay his project, where he had, you know, forty-five hundred dollars, or forty-five dollars, or whatever it is, he wants to pay it. I talked to Trish about it, and she said she didn't know whether it even possible or not, the accounting system doesn't allow for it. You'd have to refigure everybody else's, because you pay that interest down, but I said, "I'll bring it to the whole board, I promise you I'd do that," 'cause I don't know the answer.
I spoke with Marshall also, and I went in and talked with Trish also, and she has talked to the drainage attorney that we use, and he says it's not done. Um, it, it's an accounting nightmare, trying to do it, you'd have to do everything longhand. It'd be great to do it, I think, uh, the biggest benefit we're doing is doing our reclassifications early, and get them levied six months earlier, and cutting the interest costs, it's, you know, it's, it's...
That is one point.
It does more for everybody.
Wouldn't we do better to get Marshall and Doug, or, uh, Mr., our attorney, get their phone numbers, and let him, explain it to him, because of the fact that this is, how many times he called me now? It isn't like we're doing it just despite him.
No, he, why can't you do it? I said, "If there's two people, three people involved, you could do it." But when we do all the landowners, and we have to treat everybody the same, it would turn into, we'd have to hire a staff of thirty people to do it.
If there are some ongoing project out there that's not complete yet.
Point of clarification, what, what's the, what's the, say that again, just...
It hasn't been levied yet, but we know, he knows how much it's gonna cost, he, he wants to go ahead and stay ahead of time.
He, he can borrow money at the bank, if he had to borrow it, cheaper than what the six percent is that he gets charged here, which you appreciate, such simple factors.
Maybe a bit, maybe a bit.
Wants to pay it ahead of even...
No, the project's been done.
The project's been done.
We know what it costs.
We paid the contractor.
Paid, contractor's been paid, and the, the bill now is being drawn, six percent interest, and the contractor's been paid.
Right.
Was having levy for it, yeah.
So, he, he wanted to pay it, even though it hasn't been levied. It'd be like buying your seed corn early.
Sure.
You know?
Love that, by the way, but anyway.
I, I thought he would.
Yeah, but he, isn't there, I mean, I'm just getting my mind around all this stuff, isn't...
Eric could be like, "Uh, I want this one place of seed beans paid for now, and I don't want this bag of seed corn."
Well, I under, no, I understand the premise of it, but isn't there, when it's levied, and that kind of was on the Treasury report, who takes in the money, aren't the landlords able to pay, you know, when they go in and pay?
They can't...
But when it's levy, but can't they go in and pay all of theirs when, when they pay?
After it's levied.
After it's levied, yes. So what is this big bone of contention?
Between a project is done and one is levied, there may be forty landowners, if you...
I don't understand, I understand everything, you know, I'm dense, but, you know, some stuff gets through. So, what is his, there, there shouldn't be that amount, much amount of time, this is what my question...
But there has been.
There has been.
In the past, there has been a year.
Yeah.
And he's concerned with the mo, I understand interest and time and all that fun stuff, even though I'm not in the financial business, but, so, 'cause at some point in time, he could actually get in there and pay his.
And in his defense, I would venture to say that if, if we're not getting stuff put out and levied, and that's shame on us.
Is there some way to expedite this process, so they can get...
It started it today with the reclassifications.
Okay, so we'll do what we can do, I understand the legitimate legality nightmare of catering to one, it's great, yeah, wonderful, everybody's, but, he will have the opportunity to pay as soon as everything gets in place, to pay his entire chunk off, but doesn't like the time lapse.
Right, but it could be six months, he's paying six percent.
I understand, I understand, but, so hopefully, we've addressed the problem of reclassification, but this one was just too bad.
I still think Doug would be...
It's a rough deal, but it could be, I could see it, wouldn't you agree, Rick?
Yes, I do, and it was a couple of years ago, you tried some prepayments, and it was a nightmare, holy cow.
Because that year, if you recall, the, they were trying to change your, uh, writing off of expenses from five hundred thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Yes, yes, I do.
And we had several landowners who were having levies of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar levies.
Yes.
And they wanted to get it in that year before it changed to the twenty-five.
Understand.
And we allowed them to pay that year early.
Was that a...
And then they stayed in the...
Was that, was that a clerical logistical nightmare?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you'd like to alleviate those?
That's when Janet comes in.
The way the accounting system works for the county, the bills come in, and those get paid, but they're issued stamp warrants, because there's no money there. So there's officially not anything on the books for any money until it's levied.
Right.
And that could be a year down the road before it's finally levied, then that money starts coming in, repaying it.
Sure.
You try to do it earlier, there's no system...
There's no system, I understand, and I have a tidbit of information on all this, but it's nice to tie it together.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I can appreciate someone's concern, paying early, and saving money, which is interest, but it's, you know, and, I think the fair thing would say, "Yeah, we actually are addressing this and trying to expedite the process." But it's just almost a disaster because of the systems that are in place, good, bad, or indifferent, to do it otherwise.
Right.
You know, we normally levy in the fall, is there anything, I don't understand the situation.
The state only allows you to levy twice.
Twice, I was gonna say, can you levy that July first instead of September first?
You're good. You have to, you, you'd have to have two separate funds, and, and we used to do two separate.
In some counties, they...
The reason they do it, the dates we do, 'cause it goes in with your tax.
Probably is that, yeah.
Yeah.
It wanted easier to slip it in the same envelope, and...
Exactly, I, yep, I caught that, too, so I'll, I'll try to pay attention through all this, but I understand that, and I can unappreciate, that's a concern, you've gotta have knowledge of this, if it comes up, to explain to the concerned party that, very understandable, that we are actually doing something. We're not tableing it, we're not sticking our head in the sand, the reclassification should expedite the process for the next...
I talked to one farmer here this last week that had a huge, uh, and rather than pay six percent interest, and he could afford to pay it, but he went and repossessed his house, or...
Refinanced it?
Refinanced, he got three percent or two and a half percent money on that.
Mm-hmm.
It's cheaper than you could borrow at the bank, and he went along with it. There's other ways you can finance taxes, yeah.
Understandable, but, yeah, I bet you get that.
But Marshall, he keeps asking me that, I wanted to bring it to the whole board. But Marshall, he keeps asking me that. I wanted to bring it to the whole board, see what could be done. Trish didn't know. Peggy did a nice job explaining it.
Yes, she did.
What option do we have?
Good discussion.
At her statewide drainage meeting, Ford Dodge with the other clerks down there, and none of them were doing it. And they didn't know how you would do it if you wanted to.
Exactly. No, I understand that.
I mean, we, we just didn't drop his comments.
No.
We pursued it and...
Yep, and obviously, and I...
Trying to make adjustments.
And we are, but we are, and the reclassification will help.
And you're doing preclassifications, the term has come up as far as improvements. You don't file it because if the improvement doesn't go forward, but you've done 95% of the work for the reclass by doing it ahead, and then people actually know what they're going to pay, so...
And that will speed this whole thing up.
That will speed that six months to a year.
Yeah, so, yes, I mean, that's, that's very good.
That's big. That's big.
We're all making improvements.
That's awesome. Can I mention, just mention something about drainage, because I've got to learn this, too. I'm not going to bring up any discussion about this, but there's another, another drainage district that I have knowledge of. It's actually, and you guys have heard about it, too, but Humble Cusid County. And when do we, what's a way of getting that on the table? I don't want to try to get it on there now, but I'm just asking.
We need to address that. That's going to be a joint one. We'll have to have a teleconference or something, because their meetings are on Tuesdays. And that's what we'll have to set up, a public hearing on it.
Okay, because they're Gannas Carl's concerned about that issue. I have a concern about that.
We can put it on the calendar right now if you'd like.
Rick, you had discussion with the board, too, by the, did you not up there?
Yes, I talked with their boards up there, and that's what they want to do. They want to have a public meeting, so everything's on record, what everybody says, and...
That's fine, but...
So, tunnel hearsay, what's, you know...
Well, let's do that, because that's a concern legitimate, and I've physically looked at it.
Yeah, you've been out and looked at it?
Absolutely.
I've been out and looked at it. I think, has anybody else been out and looked at the issue? Abe, have you been out there and looked at it? Okay.
So, and I, like I said, I don't want to go into any great discussion. I just want to see it acted on, moved forward with.
Yeah.
Because it should be, it needs to be. Whatever it takes to do that, that's all I'm asking.
So, you want to set it up?
Let's pick a day. They meet Tuesday, right? They meet on Tuesday, so they'll do a, you know, teleconference or something. We've just got them maybe a couple of weeks' notice.
I'm just going to throw this out, because I take the argument. That being this whole drainage stuff, a lot of this gets back to the 27th.
Because, Rick, would you want to be down here for that or not? I don't think you need to be.
I'd say, I guess, if I'm here for anything else, I would want to sit in, just for anything I can contribute, but don't, I mean, I wouldn't make a trip just for that.
Yeah.
Because of this, I'm trying not, I'm trying not to bill anything for it.
What is coming down here in the near future?
Um, we, excuse me, but do we have to correlate this with their time?
That's why I get a two-week...
We have to be here on Tuesday.
We have to be here on Monday. We're the lead county. They will call.
Okay, they will call. That's, that was my question. Okay.
I'm not here for a while, I guess.
No, I was going to say, I think they'll come in for a few days.
Um, when I'm just thinking ahead here, I guess I'm wondering about, February 6th would be far enough ahead for me to have three weeks before the bid letting. That would give them a little lead time. I've got something the week before.
Are you going, you're going to be here on February 6th?
I'm, what I'm thinking is I'll come back with the plans and specs, and we'll have you set the bid date and...
Okay.
For all the ones we've set.
Yeah. That'd sure work for me as far as getting these other things done, and then I'd just be here.
Okay. I think that should give them two weeks, at least, two weeks of...
What time?
What time will work good for you?
I'm wide open. I'd just be making sure that these are a different time.
I would say 9:00.
It's the same day. We meet with the Farm Bureau at night, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they shave what number?
Two.
Get that note to Trish, so she has it.
Yeah, so she'll be able to call them up and set that up. And they could come down and sit in here personally, or they can do it over the phone. I don't care. But I know they, they want to have their full board.
It's fine, but you've seen it, I mean, we don't have to discuss it too much right now, but, yeah, that just needs to be moved forward on.
And I'll work with Trish and Peggy as far as timing for talking about these and the bid dates and completion dates. It'll be that day, it just matter what time.
That it?
That it?
I want to just give you a quick update on one other thing. There was, you got a petition for tile improvements on sub 5 of D.D. 11. David Hunter Mark filed that. There was discussion about any annex, because it's been presented that there's some land that drained into this that aren't paying. So, I, from what I was told, the discussion was, well, any annexation, let's get that taken care of.
Yeah.
Well, I checked our files back a few years ago when I, we did our preliminary report. We did the topography. I have a drawing, and I, it's out there. I was going to give it to Trish. It shows where the current boundary is and where we think it should be. All I had to do is, one of our technicians took a couple of hours and worked it up. I didn't have any time on it, anything. So, I want to be coming back to you with a, with a summary of that. Maybe I can try and do that the 6th also, but, so, it's not creating any extra work for us to go ahead and make a recommendation on areas that should be annexed before we go through with any improvement.
So, you're going to bring that information to us, then we have to set an annexation hearing on that date, certain annexations.
Yes, and I guess what I, what I'll probably just have you do that day or ask you to do, if you would, is to officially authorize it. I don't know if we actually authorized an annexation report when you talked about the petition or not. I don't, I wouldn't think you would have.
I think we didn't.
You just had discussion on it.
We had discussion on it, and we thought we should annex the property or the land before we progress any further.
Yeah, so I just, I just ask if you'd consider making that an agenda item to authorize that annexation report. Like I say, we've got the information. It won't take much to put it together. Very little time and very little expense.
So, we'll put that on the agenda for the 6th of February.
There you go. And I'll work that out with Peggy and Trish.
Is that going to go before the Algonas, the Sioux County?
After, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, busy morning. What time do you think to end this thing? Okay, I don't know how long I think that will take. We were made that 9:45.
Yeah, because you made the other one 9:00. Yeah, it's going to take a while.
Yeah, let's make that 9:45.
Well, you sure know how to mess a meeting up, Rick.
Yeah, Rick.
Yeah, yeah.
Call the Ricks. So, you're at the 6th of February, still, right?
9:45.
9:45. I know. That should fill up the morning.
There you go.
Then we'll follow it up with the Farm Bureau meeting and...
Yeah, get busy day.
Conference boards the next night. Are you out? Are you going to...
We're done now.[1739.83]